Good afternoon and welcome to the April 22nd, 2025 meeting the Georgetown County Council. Please note from the record, we do have a quorum present. Please join us as Council Reverend Cooper leads us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today to offer and finish our faith. Our Lord God, as we come together, we ask that you would order our steps. We ask that you give us wisdom, give us the knowledge and understanding that we need, oh God, to make a difference, to impact the life of our community. But we declare and we decree, but we call it down now. It's in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Thank you. We'll move down to the approval of agenda. For just for the note, we have two items on the agenda that require special attention. We will call for a motion to approve the amended agenda, the agenda as amended as follows. The request to defer action on item 10A, third reading of ordinance 2504, authorizing the development of joint industrial park between Georgetown County and Ory County for Georgetown Port property. And also a request for the applicant to withdraw item 11E, second reading of ordinance 25-11 to rezone 29.57 acres located in the Lanes Creek area of Georgetown. That agenda item will no longer be considered on this agenda. So if you're here to speak for that, I don't want you to have to stay the whole time to figure out that that's been withdrawn. Is there a motion on to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Moran. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, agenda is approved. We move now to special reports and presentations. Nonprofit spotlight this month is the Children's Trust, Georgetown County and Francis P. Brunel Foundation are partnering to spotlight a local nonprofit. This week's featured nonprofit is the Children's Trust. Ms. Erin Pate will present. Good afternoon, Ms. Pate.
Good afternoon. Hope everybody is well. I am here not going to talk about my nonprofit job. I'm talking about my nonprofit volunteer passion, which is the Children's Trust of South Carolina. I am a former gubernatorial appointee to that Board of Directors. And Children's Trust is a statewide nonprofit. And I want to thank the Brunel Foundation for doing these nonprofit spotlights and putting that before council. And Chairman Elliott and council members, this is a great opportunity, that month of April, to stand with you in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Children's Trust is South Carolina's statewide organization focused on preventing child abuse and neglect before it happens. We lead, the Children's Trust, this vital month of awareness by equipping communities across the state with tools and messages needed to champion prevention strategies. Child abuse and neglect prevention thrives through partnerships. And one way we do this is through a statewide network united by the belief that every child deserves a safe nurturing environment, supported by strong families and caring communities. It takes all of us working together to build that foundation. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it gives us the opportunity to raise our voices together and promote awareness of this issue and commit ourselves to action. Since its founding by the South Carolina Legislature in 1984, the Children's Trust has worked to fund and elevate prevention programs across the state. We've learned much over the years about what keeps children safe. It takes strengthening families and building protective factors in homes and in communities. Protective factors are things like support networks and parenting resources, which help families weather challenges and parents more effectively. Across South Carolina, programs have empowered thousands of parents and trained professionals to recognize and respond to the signs of abuse. Locally, our partners delivering vital services in Georgetown County include the Black River United Way, the Brown's Ferry Community Outreach Program, and Ms. Ruby's Kids. All of those three are delivering a program, a Children's Trust program called Triple P. It's called Positive Parenting Program. And then the St. James Health and Wellness Nonprofit is offering home visiting programs through Parent as Teachers and Healthy Families America. All those are Children's Trust sponsored and funded programs that we deliver those support systems through funding and program support locally. At the State House, we've been focused on three key legislative issues this year. The first one is preventing child abuse before it happens. In FY24, Georgetown County had 139 children involved in founded malt treatment cases. And statewide, that number is astounding, 13,000. And we've just got to do better there. Prevention is the wisest investment that we can make. The second thing we're focused on in Columbia is expanding access to school meals. Nearly 200,000 children in our state face food insecurity. Legislation with bipartisan support aims to make free meals more widely available through a program called Community Eligibility Provision. And then third, tackling the childcare crisis. Lack of access to affordable quality care keeps many, especially women, out of the workforce. Addressing this issue is critical to family stability and economic growth. We know, we all know, that trauma can lead to long-term health and social challenges. By supporting families, we can break that cycle and protect our collective future. At Children's Trust, we believe children do well when families do well. And families do well when they're supported by their communities. Thank you for standing with us this month of April and for being champions for children every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pate. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Pate? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for everything you do for Georgetown. We move down to a public comment period. A public comment period is included in each meeting agenda and shall be limited 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited three minutes, and no speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Timer is provided on screen, and at the end of your time, please wrap up your comments promptly. While speaking, please be sure to address council only in a frame from personal attacks. While a speaker has the floor, the public will respect the speaker and allow them their time to address council. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up at the clerk to council before the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for tonight's meeting?
Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a record, I think. We'll move down to the consent agenda. We have four matters on the consent agenda that were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Procurement number 25-013, runway 11-29 reconstruction at Georgetown County Airport. Staff recommends the award go to the low bidder, Ben Cox LLC of Andrews, South Carolina, for the base bid of $5,696,359.60. 6B, procurement number 25-016, hazardous waste disposal. Staff recommends awarding a services contract to the lowest bidder, MXI Environmental Services LLC of Abington, Virginia, at the unit prices quoted for both base bid and all alternate items. 6C, procurement number 25-024, fiscal year 25 municipal lease/purchase financing for vehicles and heavy equipment. Staff recommends to proceed with the lowest bidder, TD Equipment Finance Incorporated Georgetown, South Carolina, at the interest rate quotes of 3.70% APR for four-year term and 3.71% APR for the six-year term. 6D, private ambulance service franchise application and mutual aid agreement. Midwest Medical Transport Company LLC. Staff recommends the approval of this application for a private ambulance franchise and associated mutual aid agreement. Move down to the public hearing. We have an ordinance 25-04 as an ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement for the development of a joint industrial park between Georgetown County and Ory County with property located in Georgetown County and Georgetown Port to provide for the payment of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes by business and industries located in the park as may be applicable, to apply zoning and other laws in the park to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and to provide for distribution of the park revenue between the counties. This item has been deferred, but we are still holding the public hearing. Are there any comments or public hearing pertaining to ordinance 25-04? Hearing none, the public hearing for 25-04 is now closed. We'll move down to ordinance number 25-07, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2425 operating budget for Georgetown County. Are there any public comments pertaining to ordinance 25-07? Hearing none, the public hearing is hereby closed. Ordinance number 25-08 to amend Appendix C, Stormwater Management and Flood Damage Prevention Part II, Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance of Georgetown County, South Carolina Code of Ordinances. We'll now open the floor to public comments on ordinance number 25-08. Hearing none, the public comment section is closed. Ordinance number 25-09, an ordinance to adopt the newly revised flood insurance study, FIS, and the flood insurance firm Rate Map Firm. Are there any public comments pertaining to ordinance number 25-09? Hearing none, the public comment section is closed. We'll move down to appointments to boards and commissions. 8A ATAX Committee Counselor Raymond Newton has recommended the appointment of Cheryl Bowlin to the ATAX Committee representing Council District Number Five. Counselor Newton.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Cheryl Bowlin to the ATAX Committee for District Five.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Moran. Are there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, the recommendation is approved. Move down to the Assessment Appeals Board. Chairman me has recommended the appointment of Hollen Carler to the Assessment Appeals Board representing County Council District One. You've heard my motion, or is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Newton, is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. The appointment is approved. Counselor Ron J. Charlton has recommended the appointment of Mitch Tompkins to the Assessment Appeals Board representing County Council District Four. Counselor Charlton.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Mitch Tompkins to the Assessment Appeals Board for District Four.
You've heard Counselor Charlton's recommendations, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cooper, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, the appointment is approved. Move down to Library Board. Counselor Raymond Newman has recommended the appointment of Mary Ann Owens to the Library Board representing County Council District Five. Counselor Newton.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Mary Ann Owens to the Library Board representing County Council District Five.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Charlton, is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, the appointment is approved. Move to Resolutions and Proclamations. Proclamation number 25-09 to proclaim May 2025 as Building Safety Month in Georgetown County. We now have a report from Stephen Elliott, our building official. Mr. Elliott, Chad, floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. The month of May has traditionally been named Building Safety Month through ICC, which is the International Code Council. Our construction industry members consist of building safety, fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and the like. These individuals together try very hard to keep the buildings in Georgetown County safe, make sure they're constructed in a safe manner. International Code Council diligently tries to keep up with construction standards and industry progression and adjust the codes accordingly. So the International Code Council sponsors Building Safety Month to remind the public that it's a critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local officials, of what we do. And safety starts with each one of us, everybody in this room. It's all of us has a job of building safety. You see a problem, point it out. The 2025 campaign theme for Georgetown County is it starts with you, and it does. It starts with each one of us. So we encourage to raise awareness of building safety, and this is an opportunity to acknowledge the essential service that our local building and fire code officials provide for Georgetown County. So we're asking council to approve this proclamation making May 2025 Building Safety Month in Georgetown County. And if so approved, we would like to have a photo with the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. You've heard the report from our building official, Stephen Elliott, to proclaim for proclamation number 25-09 to proclaim 2025 as Building Safety Month in Georgetown County. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cooper, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, proclamation is approved. Do pictures now, or do that?
Who's your next chairman, just call me now.
Oh, you wrote this, oh, you had a note for him up here. You'd have to write him another note.
Move down to proclamation number 25-10, proclaiming the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Georgetown County. We now have a report from Brandon Ellis, our Director of Emergency Services.
Good evening, Chairman Elliott, members of council. As you mentioned, I'm here for proclamation 2510, recognizing May 18th through 24th as EMS Week. We do this every year. It's a way for us to recognize our responders, EMTs, paramedics, and other pre-hospital care, delivery clinicians, and recognize the hard work that they do to keep us safe in our community. These men and women work around the clock, as you're well aware, on a daily basis, providing the highest level of emergency medical care that you could ask for to those who live, work, and play here in Georgetown County. This year's theme is "We Care for Everyone", and our staff truly exemplifies that on a daily basis through their dedicated service and their selfless service to our community, often with little sleep and in less than ideal situations. As some of you are aware, you've lived that life in the past. So our folks show up, they do what's needed, and they provide top-notch care to those within our county. So our wish is that you would adopt proclamation 2510. Subject to any questions, that's all we have for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. You've heard the report from Brandon, our Director of Emergency Services, on proclamation number 2510 to proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Georgetown County. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move by adopting a proclamation number 25-10.
There's a motion by Counselor Moran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cooper, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, proclamation is approved. Picture five?
I'm sure Ms. Jackie wants a beautiful picture before you leave.
All right, we will move right on to third reading of ordinances. Order number, ordinance number 25-04, an ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement for the development of a joint industrial park between Georgetown County and Ory County with property located in Georgetown County, the Georgetown Port, to provide for the payment and fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes by business and industries located in the park as may be applicable, to apply zoning and other laws in the park to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and to provide for distribution of park revenues between the counties. This action has been deferred by approval of the agenda. So we move down to ordinance number 25-06 to amend the language of the Crown Point Plan Development Narrative, to allow for a transfer of neighborhood or mixed-use commercial/professional/medical/office square footage at a rate of one residential unit per 1,200 square feet of commercial area. This is in Council District Seven. We have a report from Ms. Holly, our Planning Director. Ms. Holly, add the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a mixed-use plan development that's located just north of the city of Georgetown, and it's west of the IP Canal. This particular plan development is divided into 12 parcels. As we discussed at the last meeting, Parcells One, Two, and Three have had site plan review by the Planning Commission. And Parcel Three is currently under review for construction. for construction and land disturbance approval. Parcel Four is the section of this P D that was originally approved potentially for the location of the Georgetown Hospital. There are other parcels throughout the P D that also contain various amounts of approved commercial square footage. At the time the P D was originally approved, the hospital was considering construction, um, at this location. It was not a done deal even at that time because the language was included in the P D narrative at that time that said that if the hospital was not constructed there, that they could transfer that to residential density, but that residential density did have to come out of the total that was approved for the P D at that time. The request from the applicant here tonight is to amend that language, to allow the professional office medical area or other approved commercial uses to be changed to residential density as a minor revision that would be handled by planning staff. So every twelve hundred square feet of commercial area that is not developed, um, would be allowed to be developed as one residential unit up to a maximum of six hundred thousand square feet, um, which would be a maximum of five hundred units. Those five hundred units would then not have to be deducted from the total number of units for the P D. Staff feels that this proposed text amendment would allow for development of the P D with or without the inclusion of the hospital, and the proposed transfer to residential density would be a significantly less intense use in terms of traffic, um, for the project. And this P D does have a statement that every parcel or every phase has to come back through the Planning Commission for site plan review, so, um, the Planning Commission would have that final oversight for each section, um, as it's ready to be developed. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request back in February. There was no one but the applicant at the public hearing, and the commission unanimously recommended approval for the text change. As an update, um, at council's request from the last meeting, we did discuss with the developer the potential for including some affordable housing units, and they have agreed, and we have updated the ordinance accordingly to show that twenty percent of any of the mult, of any of the transferred, um, residential density that are multifamily rental units would be affordable at a hundred and twenty percent of the average median income for Georgetown County. Um, we did use similar language for the, if you'll remember, the Carolina Trails P D. We also included some affordability language there, um, and we worked with the developer to basically include that same language here. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson?
Oh, we have a, a general question not, um, that ties into this. Is it possible to have, um, planning staff and, and Planning Commission review all of the upcoming projects, um, and incorporate the workforce housing language into those prior to coming to us?
Um, yes, we could certainly have that discussion with those projects as they come forward, um, specifically if it's ones that come here. Now, of course, keep in mind, we do have some that are developed under current zoning where they aren't asking for any amendment or change.
Right.
Um, we could certainly, as a staff policy, um, approach them with that when they come in with the projects. Um, it's also, as you'll remember, part of our land use element that there are certain, um, I think we called them priority areas for affordable housing that we've noted on our land use map. Um, so I anticipate also with the zoning ordinance rewrite, we'll have some sort of language with incentives, um, and to, kind of so that we, that we don't have to hammer it out every time someone comes. The goal would be to have a framework so there would be an expectation for when these would apply and, and how exactly it would look. So we'll, we'll be working on that as well.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank, um, you, your staff, and the developer for incorporating that into this language.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions for Ms. Holly? Hearing none. Um, I'll entertain a motion to amend to, on ordinance number two five dash zero six, to amend the language of Crown Point Plan Bull of Development P D narrative, T M S zero-two dash one zero zero-nine dash zero zero four dash two-two dash oh-one, to allow for a transfer of neighborhood or mixed-use commercial, professional, medical, office square footage at a rate of one residential unit per twelve hundred square feet of commercial. Uh, is there a motion on this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-six, and, and I feel, Holly, I want to thank you all for the work you've done to make that change. Thank the developers also.
Thank you.
You've heard a motion from Counsel Moran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by everybody. We'll say Counsel Anderson. Is there any discussion? We'll now call for a motion to amend ordinance number two five dash zero-six to incorporate the revised text.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Henderson. Is there any discussion? We'll now call for a vote on the amendment. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Amendment passes. We'll now move back to the vote on the main motion, which is at third reading. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? The ordinance, it passes, seven-zero. Move on to the second reading of ordinances, ordinance number two five dash zero-seven, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five operating budget of Georgetown County. Ms. Karis Langston, thank you, ma'am, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, ordinance twenty-five dash oh-seven, amend the fiscal year twenty-five operating budget as outlined in the body of the ordinance. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on any one of those items. Otherwise, staff requests that you give second read approval to ordinance twenty-five dash oh-seven.
You've heard a report from Ms. Langston. Is there a motion, or are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance two five dash zero-seven, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five operating budget of Georgetown County.
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cooper. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? Ordinance passes. Thank you, Ms. Langston. Ordinance number two five dash zero-eight, to amend Appendix C, Storm Order Management and Flood Damage Prevention, Part Two, Flood Damage Prevention of Ordinance of Georgetown County, South Carolina Code of Ordinances. We have a report from Ms. Richardson. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. This is our Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, and it was last amended back in April of twenty twenty-three. This ordinance regulates construction in our flood hazard zones that are identified on the firms or the flood insurance rate maps. As you know, we participate in the flood insurance program, and it is administered by the National Flood Insurance Program, or N F I P, which is part of FEMA. This organization does make it mandatory that lending institutions provide federally-backed flood insurance for structures that are located in a special hazard flood zone. Um, we do have to have a flood ordinance that is a prerequisite for participating in the N F I P, and, as you know, it affects our insurance rates. Georgetown County is currently at a Level Seven, which saves our homeowners about fifteen percent on their flood insurance if they're located within a flood zone. Uh, we have had recent changes to our flood maps, which we'll talk about in the next item on your agenda, um, to the Black River Watershed area. So based on that, we do need to amend our flood prevention ordinance, um, and this is mandatory in order to, um, again, remain in the N F I P and keep our current rating of seven. Um, this ordinance is drafted to meet the minimum standards. S C D N R has reviewed the changes. You have that, um, in your packet as well. It's a very lengthy ordinance, but the changes are highlighted in red. There are, I think, two areas of clarification. There is a definition that's changed, but the main changes are basically the change of the new effective date to reflect the new maps that we have. Um, we are recommending approval for the ordinance updates, and we are lucky to have my subject matter experts here, Mr. Elliott and Mr. Millwood, who have worked on these ordinance changes and, um, have studied the maps much better than I. Um, so between the three of us, we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson and staff?
This was the ordinance we really didn't have a choice in. Is that, isn't that the one?
That's correct.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Uh, we will entertain a motion on ordinance number two five dash zero-eight, to amend Appendix C, the Storm Order Management and Flood Damage Prevention, Part Two, Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance of Georgetown County, South Carolina Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Moran. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? The ordinance passes. Move down to ordinance number two five dash zero-nine, an ordinance to adopt the newly revised flood insurance study, F I S, and the flood insurance rate maps, the F I R M. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. These two, like I said, go hand in hand. Um, after the adoption of the maps, you remember of our newest maps we did in twenty twenty-three, um, the state began revisions on the upper Black River Watershed area for Georgetown County. Uh, these maps have now been approved by the state and recommended by FEMA. So again, we have to, by ordinance, adopt these maps for our new flood maps. Um, the new effective date is June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, we currently have an effective date of May ninth, twenty twenty-three, so that needs to be changed. We need to adopt these map revisions prior to the June eighteenth date. Again, this is mandatory in order to consider, continue our participation in, in F I P. Um, we provided the link for you there to our forerunner software where you can see where the proposed changes are. This is basically in what is referred to as the Rose Hill area, the northwest section of the county, and it basically takes, um, what were previously some unnumbered A flood zones and gives them numbers or gives them elevations. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson?
I, I have a question. Ms. Holly, is this the, what was the acronym for those lines that were, you know, that were inland that, uh, were showing wave action? Is that a different thing, or is that the same thing?
I think you're referring to the coastal A zone or the limbo line.
Yes.
I don't think we have any of those in this section.
Okay. That's, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Quick question. Holly, on the, on the rates, we have a Level Seven as a county, you said. What's the highest level rating that you can have? Do you guys know?
One, so they go back.
So it goes down, okay.
The best.
And then that impacts residents' insurance rates. So what are things that the county can do to improve our current rating?
Um, that's our participation in the community rating system, and we get audited for that. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Millwood's working, and Mr. Elliott are working on that now. Um, there are multiple ways, and we, we work to earn what points we can to change that number or to keep that number. Um, you know, certainly things like publications and all the way up to things like increasing the, um, the level where structures have to be built, adding to that elevation. Um, I think we have one for the free board now. You know, obviously, the more you add, the stricter you make those reg, regulations, there are more points of it available for that. But there's a, a list of things that, you know, Matt works now to catalog all our open space, for example, and we present that to them, um, that's in a flood zone, and that, that earns us points. So it's a, it's a complicated list of things we could do.
Any further questions? You've heard a report from Ms. Richardson on ordinance two five dash zero-nine, an ordinance to adopt the newly revised flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate map. Is there a motion on the floor regarding this ordinance?
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Anderson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? The ordinance, the ordinance passes. Move down to ordinance number two five dash ten, to rezone one parcel located at eight-two-eight South Morgan Avenue and Andrews, T M S zero-one dash zero-one zero-one dash zero-six zero dash zero zero dash zero zero, from one-half acre residential to general commercial. This is Council District Three. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. This parcel is currently zoned for half-acre lots, and it contains an existing commercial building that was built there prior to the time that this section of the county was zoned in two thousand and eight. Uh, the request is here before you tonight in order to bring this non-conforming use into compliance with the correct zoning district. Um, if you look at the application, this is a little bit different in that staff proposed this. Um, it was brought to our attention that the building was out of compliance. Again, it was there prior to zoning, um, and we think it was just sort of a mistake when that two thousand and eight zoning occurred. There is general commercial, um, adjacent to this track to the north and east, and there's also R one-half zoning to the south and the west. There are residential, commercial, and vacant properties in the surrounding area. The proposed commercial zoning would allow for various commercial uses like gas stations, drive-through restaurants, retail, garages. Um, the minimum lot size here is ten thousand square feet. The setbacks are fifty for the front, ten for the side, and fifteen in the rear. Um, this property is not located within a regulated flood zone. There is, like I said, general commercial zoning located adjacent to this track, so we do not have a concern here about spot zoning. Um, and again, the rezoning would bring both the lot size and the use, um, into conformance with the zoning requirements. There is an adjacent commercial corridor designation on the future land use map right across the street. So due to the small parcel size of this track and the allowance for community uses in the R E S district, we are not recommending a change to the future land use map. Planning Commission held their public hearing on this back in March, and there was no one to speak on the subject, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, um, for the proposed rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions? Hearing none. You've heard the report from Ms. Holly Richardson on ordinance dash twenty, twenty-five dash ten, to rezone one parcel located at eight-two-eight South Morgan Avenue and Andrews, T M S zero-one dash zero-one zero-one dash zero-six zero dash zero zero dash zero zero, from one-half acre residential to general commercial. Is there a motion on ordinance twenty-five-ten?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved by Counselor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cooper. Is there any discussion?
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, this, this partial, parcel we are discussing is, uh, it's been commercial, uh, since my bicycle riding days, which was a long time ago. And, um, it was one of the properties that was overlooked during the initial rezoning, zoning in two thousand and eight, and it really didn't come to light until just recently. We have a, a young businessman that wants to open up a business there, which, um, there's always, it's always been commercial property. So it was just something we're kind of just cleaning up.
Yes, sir.
And going through the process here. But that's, that's what we're dealing with.
Thanks, Counsel. Thank you to Counselor Newton. Is there any, any further discussion? All right. All in favor of ordinance two five dash one zero, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? The ordinance passes. Ordinance number two five dash one-one, to rezone twenty-nine point five-seven acres located south of Brown's Ferry Road, approximately three hundred and seventy-five feet southeast of Holmes, Holmes Drive and Lanes Creek area of Georgetown, identified as T M S zero-two dash zero-four zero-five dash zero-one dash one-seven dash zero-zero, from F A two V R ten, was withdrawn and approved with the approval of the agenda. That, that issue is dead. That ordinance is no longer being considered. Ordinance number twenty-five dash twelve, to rezone five parcels totaling approximately forty-nine point one-four acres located on Greenleaf Court, west of Old Town Avenue, from the Harmony Township Plan Development to Forest Agriculture, T M S number zero-one dash zero-four three-eight dash zero-zero-one dash zero-three dash zero-two, zero-three, zero-four, zero-five, and zero-nine, and to amend the boundary of the plan, uh, development. This is in Council District Three. Ms. Richardson.
Sir, these parcels that you listed are located between Turkey Creek and Old Town Avenue in the Harmony Township P D, and that track is currently vacant. Um, there are also wetlands located on the track. Um, the current property owner has asked to rezone this piece because it is no longer owned or affiliated with the Harmony Township Plan Development District. Um, that's why this is not only a rezoning, but it's also an amendment to the boundaries of the Harmony P D. Anytime we amend a P D boundary, that's a major, um, amendment that has to come through Planning Commission and County Council. So we're doing two things with this request. Forty-five point one acres of the property in question have already been placed in a conservation easement, which is included in your packet. That easement does not allow for additional residential development. Um, in twenty seventeen, that's, I think, how long this easement has been around, staff went ahead and reduced the Harmony Plan Development density levels to reflect, um, the placement of the conservation easement on the property. The other four acres that you see there include three one-acre residential lots and a one-acre right-of-way, um, that was called Greenleaf Court. Um, these lots of records would meet the minimum standards for the proposed R F A zoning. Um, Greenleaf Court is a privately owned right-of-way, and any improvements for that would be, um, at the cost of the developer, um, if those three, or when those three lots are developed. The surrounding tracks are all zoned either P D or conservation preservation. The future land use map designates this property as R E S, um, which allows for density of one to five units per acre, so we're not recommending an amendment to the future land use map as part of the request. We did also receive a letter from the Harmony Township P D to let us know that the H O A didn't have any objections to this area being removed from the plan development. In the Planning Commission at their public hearing back in March, um, there was no one but the applicant that spoke, and they also recommended approval unanimously for the
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there, are there any questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on ordinance two five dash one-two, to rezone five parcels, approximately totaling approximately forty-nine point one-four acres located on Greenleaf approximately 49.14 acres located on Greenleaf Court west of Old Town Avenue from the Harmony Township Plan Development to Forest Agriculture, TMS number 01-0438-001-03-02-03-04-05 and 09. Is there a motion on ordinance 2512?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Charlton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Ordinance passes 7-0. Move on to first reading of ordinances. The following ordinances are read into the record by title only. Ordinance number 25-13, an ordinance to amend. Ordinance number 20-59 pertaining to the Georgetown County Council's rule of procedure. Ordinance number 25-14, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Georgetown County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026, to provide for the expenditure, therefore, to provide for revenues for the payment thereof as well as adjustments to various fee schedules. Ordinance number 2025-15, I'm thinking that's 25-15, authorizing the execution of a special source credit agreement by and between Georgetown County and Zilmet USA Corporation, providing for payment and fee in lieu of taxes, payment in lieu of taxes in the use of special source revenue credits and providing for other related matters. Now we move down to the approval of amendments. We will now approve or entertain a motion to approve the regular council meetings for April 8, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. The amendments are approved. Or is there any further business that have come before council at this time? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Charlton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. That concludes the meeting of this 20 council meeting.